All right, we'll call the meeting order at six o'clock on the 15th of June 2021. The public hearing before the Suraconey Board Appeals and Survey Call Order, six p.m. at Suraconey Car House in Hayward. President on behalf of the Board, Al River, Laura Ross, Mark Olson, Dee Doblis, and Steve Kelsey from the zoning office, Jay and Kathy. Those persons who are going to get pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order: reading of the application, submission of the file to the board, applicant's statement and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from persons in objection to the application, but less permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed with other interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board, and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agreed by a decision of the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within thirty days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the thirty day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a Class II notice in accordance with Chapter 985 Wisconsin Statutes and Suraconey Record and the Suraconey Gazette. Public hearing will follow this order: various applications, new business, and adjournment. Has all of the board members been, had an opportunity to read the minutes of our last meeting?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
The names are second. Second, receive. All those in favor of the motion, say before we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All votes saying aye, motion to approve the minutes is period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two variance applications tonight. First, the public hearing, the town of Leonard, variance number twenty-one dash zero zero three, owner Ronald and Sarah Burton, part of the northwestern quarter, the southwestern quarter, section twenty-five, township forty-two north, range nine west, parcel zero one four nine four two two five three two oh two, zero point six total acres, zone residential recreational one. Applications requested for the construction of a twenty-six by thirty-six, which was twenty-nine by thirty-nine with eaves, accessory structure in the form of garage. The proposed structure would be located twenty-two and a half feet at the closest point to the centerline of Tanning Point Road in private driveway easement. Structure to be less than sixteen feet in height. The proposed structure would meet all other setbacks, but is not eligible for the reduced town road setbacks. Variance is requested in section four point two one, parent six of the Suraconey zoning ordinance, would require the prior granting of a variance for any structure closer than thirty feet to the centerline of private driveway easement that is thirty-three feet wide or less in width. As per my onsite notes, I was out there on April twelfth and measured and verified setback distances. There's a few large trees that would require removal in this area and some additional earthwork moving and grading, which I believe the applicant has started some of that process. The applicant will need to work with Suraconey Zoning and Conservation on a potential grading permit for the proposed variance. This would be in the form of potentially installing a rain garden area between the proposed garage and existing boat house area. The side rain guard installation wouldn't be needed unless conditioned by approval of the board appeals. The applicant would also be moving an existing shed from the property or potentially relocating it to the other side of the lot if it can meet the required road setbacks, sewer system setbacks, and lake setbacks. We haven't measured that area out, but in conversations with the applicant, if they could fit it somewhere else and be compliant, they would look at doing so. There've been several other recent garage variances that were approved on this stretch of Tanning Point Road. Most recent are variance nineteen dash zero zero two, which allows for a twenty-six by twenty-eight garage with eaves, a setback of twenty feet to the centerline, and variance sixteen zero zero eight, which was a lot of her twenty-five and a half by thirty-two foot garage, at a setback distance of twenty-one and a half feet to the centerline of Tanning Point Road. Proposed garage and relocation of the existing shed for the impervious surfaces would be approximately thirteen point three nine percent of the total land area. By motion of the town of Leonard, town board, motions approved, Lori Christians, town chair, Michael Dandrow supervisor, Jack Schustrom supervisor, Steve Karenin supervisor, Jason Schustrom supervisor, no additional comments, sign Carol Stone, town clerk. There were eight opinion letters sent out, seven returned, all sent with no objections. I have no objections, Craig Linder trust. I have no objections, William and Karen Forrester trust. I have no objections, No Problem Good People, Robert and Mary Jo Eads trust. I have no objections, this would be good use of an empty wooded parcel, I strongly recommend approval, Richard Lindyer trust. I have no objections, Bertha Strasburg trust. I have no objections, we live directly across the street from the Burton's and logically may be impacted the most by this project, we have no issues with the project, Michael Stamps. We have, I have no objection to this, Sandra Bertin, that is all. Okay, what is the reduced town road setback? So we crafted an ordinance, this is probably two and a half, three years ago now, where this Board of Appeals was seeing a large amount of reduced garage setbacks, whether it be on town roads or whether it be on private evening roads. So we made, and Mark's got that sheet there, so we made an ordinance amendment so that this board didn't have to see a lot of these garage variances, that if determined by the zoning administrator and town approvals, that you had no other area to be compliant and fit the garage, you can build to reduce town road setback. It's twenty-two feet from a right of way on an end load and twelve feet from the right of way on a side load. That was brought through as a public hearing process, and actually this board is the one that kind of steerheaded that movement more particularly Mark Olson, and went through a public hearing process via the zoning committee and ratification at county board. But this individual circumstance would not meet that, in that garage is eligible for reduced road setbacks, would need to be less than six hundred square feet, this proposal is larger than that.
Okay, are the Burton's here or someone to speak on their behalf?
Yes, my name is Ronald Burton. I am the, myself and my wife Sarah are the owners of this piece of property. What, well, basically, you know, you have everything there, I can just add to that a little bit. One of the issues that we do have because of the seventy-five foot ordinary high watermark setback, we've tried to locate, you know, a garage on other parts of the property, but because of that and because of our septic system, there's no other spot to put a garage. What I'd like to do is, Jay, am I correct? If I am granted this and I build my garage, can I put a temporary guest quarters in there?
It would be something that you would want to have this Board of Appeals also approve. You know, this has gone out as a Class II notice, so to change the size as shown or to potentially raise it less than the sixteen feet in height is going to be difficult at this point, but you, for you to designate a separate area of that layout to be as temporary guest quarters, if approved by the board and meeting the zoning requirements for temporary guest quarters, I would have no issues with that.
Okay, because that's what, I would not change, part of the reason for the size of this building is one of the back corners of that, I would like to have a temporary guest quarters, since we have, we only have two bedrooms. We were unfortunate enough to have to have put in a new septic system, right? Basically, right after we bought the property, and we put in a three-bedroom system. So I have the capability in the septic system, but I just don't have any place to put another bedroom, and that was my reading through the statutes, and this temporary guest quarters came up, so that was part of the reason to build a structure this big, so I could take a corner and dedicate it to that. And I understand that there is, you know, inspection with the building inspector, he'll have to inspect because obviously you need egress, and then some signage too, sign underneath my fire number and a sign on the structure itself, and also a big one that you cannot rent out. It's not a rental unit whatsoever, just for personal use.
No rental, no kitchen facilities, yep.
Okay, so that's one of the reasons that, you know, I'd like to build this building. Another one is, we've talked about that shed, and I decided that if I'm granted this permit, or excuse me, this variance to build a garage, I am going to, the shed is going away, so the shed is not going to go anywhere else in the property. With the building this big, I should be able to get all this stuff from that shed in there, along with, well, boat trailer and, you know, I got just boat trailer, wood splitter, I have a lot of other things that I would like to put inside the shed rather than having them sit outside in the weather, plus then have the neighbors looking at them with kind of a nice sort of boot, so I'm hoping to clean it up that way. And then also, last but not least, I am a carpenter, I'm a carpenter builder, I'm a cabinet maker, furniture maker, so I would love to have an area in there dedicated for a shop, even if I have to have my tools on wheels pushing in the corner, I would like to have enough room so I could, you know, build like, build new cabinets for my cabin, for instance, and do just my personal shop work in there, just kind of play around in there within the shop. So that, that's kind of the reasoning for that. Jay mentioned the, also the other two buildings that are on the, the two garages that are on our road, that are literally, they will be closer to the centerline than what I'm asking to be, and then also, I don't know if it makes any difference, but I am at the end of the road, so, you know, there's that much left traffic that should make it down to me to boot. Plus, the other thing is, if you've been out and seen the site, I do have some stones, some big rocks and some trees and stuff in there, I would like to leave that, I want to leave that little buffer between me and the road with those trees and with those stones and just kind of keep that natural vegetation. And then, kind of the last point here, and that is, if any of you've been out there, I don't know if you've noticed that the berm that I did construct there, and I had, when I, when I had them come in and remove some trees and bring some fill in, I thought, man, this is the time to get a machine in there, because otherwise I'll be doing this with a wheelbarrow. So I got him in there and he built a berm for me approximately seventy feet long, and there's kind of a, just a natural drainage there anyway. So we tapered it to basically nothing on the ends, and in the center, it's roughly twenty inches high, I have about a four-foot base on it, and it was fill sand, basically, it was constructed with fill sand, and then I brought him, he brought in another two yards of topsoil, and I covered it all with topsoil, and then I seeded it, so if you're out there you see that, the vegetation is actually coming in pretty good on it. Now, to be totally honest with you, I have not done any calculations on this, so I can't tell you how many gallons of water, whatever it's been a whole, but my theory is that I can, I could get in there now with a wheelbarrow and, and a Saturday, I could raise that whole thing a foot if I had to, so I don't think it'd be a whole lot of work now, since I got the groundwork is done there. And then like Jay explained to me, it wasn't necessary, but I wanted to do it anyway to help keep some of that, you know, water from flowing directly into the lake. So that is, I believe that is about all I have for you. Is there any questions?
Temporary guest quarters, are you planning on trying to have a kitchen, a bathroom, and?
No, well, as, as I have read the rules on that, no, there will be definitely no kitchen, since that is not legal in that scenario. And as of right now, I don't think that there will be a bathroom, I've kind of looked into it, and my septic system and the well is way at the other end of the property, and I'm thinking like in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars, so I figure for twenty thousand dollars, they can run into the cabin.
I don't think that designated shop there is an issue, it's within the walls of the garage, you can do it.
Yeah.
Do the garage, do the shop.
We were involved with footprints, not that, not in general use.
Then you had them come in and do, I saw your berm work, I noticed that right away. So that's, what is the soil there, is it all sandy, or is that, did you bring in sewer rock before, as a base underneath, did you dig it out at all, or?
No, actually, what we did, he just basically scraped off of that berm, he just basically scraped off the loose vegetation that was there, and then it was just fill sand, so it had a lot of stones in it, and it wasn't pure sand, it had stones in it, it had some clay in it. So that's what the base of that is, is sand.
Being, I take it you don't perp there, because you've got a mound system, what's that drainage going to be, Jay?
Yeah, ultimately, rain gardens and infiltration basins, which Mr. Burton's kind of designing there, are based on a volumetric calculation, so how much rainwater are you capturing? So in an instance like this, not only are you capturing some of the overland flow, but mainly that e line of the garage that's going to be sloping down to there. From there, it's based on soil condition, yes, but it's also based on, well, how deep is that area versus the surface area of it, so it is a volumetric calculation. So I have not ran the calculations either, you know, from what he was describing, seventy feet of a berm area, you know, about the size of kind of that depression, the square footage?
Well, like I say, in the center of it, I'm roughly twenty inches above the layer, the ground layer, so like I say, the ground is tapered like that, it's a natural valley or natural drainage, so I'm roughly twenty inches high in the middle.
Okay, and I guess the square footage of that, that area is not only the berm, but I guess how much area?
From there back?
Ten by thirty, ten by eighty, ten by?
Well, I would say it goes back probably twenty-five, twenty feet, twenty-five feet to where the slope comes down, where it put the fill in for the, for the new garage.
And by how wide?
Well, like I say, it kind of, it slopes out, so it goes to nothing.
It kind of goes from the front where the garage is going, it's just a side picture showing the berm here, so it goes from the backside, you know, around up to the trees where there's some sun, it's right over here, so it's the width of the garage, it goes from here and?
I would think, I mean, if you divert water correctly or something like that, I think you're not going to have issues with excess water coming out of that.
That other picture was over here, so.
Good size. Yeah, and really, if it was something where you're getting water, or you have your rain event that was overtopping the berm, you'd want to dig deeper.
Right.
On the inside of it, so it can hold more water.
Well, like I say, I thought, one of two, there are two thoughts that, obviously, one is to dig deeper, number two is raise the berm.
Correct.
You know, so I, it may be a combination, yeah, maybe you can take the material out and put it on top of the berm.
Yeah.
Would probably be the most economical way to do it.
Yep, yeah, you'd be getting credits kind of on both sides there.
Right.
I would think that it would, it would accept the majority of that water.
I like that you started already, that I noticed that right away when I went in and looked at it, so.
We plan on, I mean, our plan is to be there for the long haul, that's kind of our goal here, that's another reason for the size of the building, because we have, when we sell what we have down home, there's not going to be much room left in the PP up here.
Glad you decided you're moving it, because when I paced off areas on your lot, there's nowhere else that's compliant to put that shed.
No, I don't think there is going to be, because of the septic system.
You put that on top of your septic?
Yeah, you've got the septic system on the other side, and we don't want to write and look out the, you know, two feet from the cabin.
Yeah, because you'd be back for another variance, because you couldn't, you couldn't beat the road setback or your septic setback and the lake setback, so glad you've already found a home for that.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one other question. You're going with three-foot overhang?
No, no, I'm going to go with eighteen-inch overhangs.
Okay, because it's got three feet on the drawing here.
Foot and a half, both sides.
Yeah, foot and a half on each side, with?
Okay, I misread it, yep, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone speaking opposition to the application? Hearing none, discussion by the board. When I was out there, the placement of this structure doesn't look like it's going to be any type of visual impediment, and it's pretty slow traffic through there and probably low volume traffic also, I don't know whose speed bumps them are, but that always slows me down. And that, and it's kind of wide open, so, you know, kids can come and go without any, without any issues. I didn't see any, any problem with approving this one, and I'm glad to hear that the shed would be removed. I wondered about that also, where it could possibly be placed. I imagine you'll have to move that prior to construction or remove it, I mean.
Yeah, that's a great question. Can I locate that temporarily till the garage is built? Here's my plan, I'm going to back up again, I'm sorry, I'll go back up a second. With the price of lumber, I, I don't, I'm not going to build this thing this year yet. I just hope, crossing my fingers, that I can wait until next year and literally save thousands of dollars. But what I would like to do, if I could, is I would like to, once I start it, I'm going to build it, I'm going to build that thing next summer, no question about it. But what I'd like to do is just move the shed into the, more or less where the driveway is now, till the building is built and I can move the stuff in there, and if I can't, that's fine, I will find a home for it, I totally get that. But I would kind of like to ask now if that would be a possibility to move that shed. It's actually is on, it's sitting on skids right now, because that's how we, to be honest with you, that's how we clean that area out. We put it on skids, we pulled it out, we cut the trees down and brought the fill in, we pushed it back. So that, that's how we did that, just to make it, fiscally, to make it, you know, more economical to do that. But if it has to come out of there, I will take it out of there, that's not a deal breaker by any means, but just for convenience for me, it'd be nice to leave it, but if I can't, that's, I totally understand that.
We've had prior after-the-fact requests that oftentimes, after the fact never comes.
I, I understand that, and I do understand that totally.
So I think it would be the board's preference that it be removed prior to construction.
Okay, so as soon as they start?
I'm only speaking for myself, will you?
I understand that.
I can vouch for you.
No, I totally understand that, I, I was a fire chief for twenty-one years, so I was involved with a lot of town meetings and whatnot, and people would stand up here and promise anything they want to promise, but to see it done, it doesn't necessarily happen, so I understand that.
Parking, parking it in the driveway could be a fire hazard. It would look like hell for one thing, but, yeah, access for emergency services would be an impediment, I think.
Okay, that's no problem, as soon as I get the concrete guy in there, I will pull it out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I like that he's already limited himself to a one-story, a two-story, he just won't fit in that neighborhood, so I agree with that part of it. Well, just like the other two in that area, you know, my, my concern is that, you know, the variance is supposed to be the minimum, and, you know, we're considering garages a necessity up here, but I know I'm in the minority on that, but I agree that it fits in there and the garage is a necessity, but I do kind of, I am kind of a little concerned about the size of it, it was a brother too also, so that's not granting the minimum needed to satisfy, you know, the hardship, whatever that is, which is you need a garage in the winter, so that's, that's my one concern, but boy, it sure seems like that calculation seems awful low for what's on that property, but I'm assuming it's right, fourteen, thirteen point three nine percent.
We ran it twice.
Yeah, boy, just walking that property, it just seems like there's more there, but I trust you, and it'll help by having that shed gone, so you don't have that extra, so those are, those are my, my concerns.
Any other comments or discussion? Someone care to make a motion to either approve or deny?
I did have one further question before anybody makes a motion. Isn't there a separate fee and license involved in putting temporary guest quarters in? Is there a separate filing fee and everything else?
There is.
We can't approve that tonight.
Right, there is a separate fee and there's a separate application, as well as an affidavit that needs to be signed, recorded with the registered deeds, and an additional fire number permit for it. For those of the board members that aren't familiar, we did pass an ordinance back in December that allows for temporary guest quarters and/or bunkhouses. Those temporary guest quarters would be something included in an existing or a new accessory structure like this. That temporary guest quarters area needs to be less than five hundred square feet, cannot contain kitchen facilities, needs to be open concept as far as what's being designated as that overflow sleeping area, needs to have a voluntary uniform dwelling code inspection, needs a separate fire number indicator that there's potential someone sleeping in that structure, cannot be rented, it can have plumbing, if it has plumbing, it's included in that square footage. There's a few other parameters, but those are kind of the major ones.
So we do approve it, you do have to file for another?
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted that to be clear. I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with, with the height restriction and the, and the footprint parameters as outlined in the application, and with the condition that the existing shed, this yard barn, whatever you want to call it, be removed prior to construction.
Would you like to turn any additional time frames as securing a variance? In your bylaws, it's, I think it's two years, unless otherwise deemed as a separate condition by this board. So if you say mute on it and don't say it, your bylaw's kicking on a two-year, which is fine, okay?
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion seconded by Dee. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all votes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved by vote four to one. Fine is, fine is the fact that no change used in zone district, not harmful damaging to the rest of others, there's no basis, record on the team, yep, and it's shown free diligence in protecting the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then you can talk to the office about taking out permission.
This is the second variance application, it's a public hearing in the town of La Gibwa, variance number twenty-one dash zero zero four, owner Aaron Kruger, Kruger, part of government lot three, section nine, township thirty-eight north, range six west, parcel zero two zero six three eight zero nine five three zero seven, one point one total acre zone residential one, R one. Applications for, the request for the placement of an eleven by twenty-four accessory structure in the form of a shed. Proposed structure would be located eighteen feet at the closest point to the right-of-way line of state highway twenty-seven seventy, and seventy-three feet to the centerline of state highway twenty-seven seventy. Structures to be less than fourteen feet height, proposed structure would meet all other setbacks. This shed is currently being temporarily stored on the lot, but would be relocated to the new area. Variance is requested in section four point two one, parent one, Suraconey Zoning Ordinance would require the prior granting of a variance for any structures located closer to one hundred and thirty feet from the centerline of Class A Highway, or sixty-six feet from the right-of-way line. Right-of-way setback would be a greater requirement for the variance, with a fifty-five foot wide right-of-way shown on the north side of the highway. As per my staff report, again, this is somewhat for an after-the-fact placement of the shed as part of the onsite, the applicant? As part of the onsite, the applicant initially came to the zoning office to receive a permit after the shed was delivered to the property. The applicant expressed he was unaware that a permit was needed for the shed, but wanted to do everything right. As part of the onsite visit on April 19, 2021, it was determined that no additional buildable area was available on the property, and that a variance would be needed. We looked at an area on the southwest corner of the property next to the driveway, but it appeared that the lot line is too close in this location. The shed place, the shed placement was ultimately determined and shown on the inspection reports to meet the river setback to 75 feet and placed just outside of the overhead power line. This placement then gave a setback of 18 feet to the closest point to the highway right-of-way. Though the other location that would be slightly further away from the highway and still meet the 75 feet from the river would be an area that would require considerable amount of fill, grading, and tree removal off the southeast corner of the house. In other conversations with the applicant, he recently inherited the property, and the shed is now needed to allow for additional room in the existing attached garage. As per the town of Ojibwa, motion was approved. Dan Granica, town chair, Robert Granica supervisor, Steve Kuzman supervisor, no additional comments, signed Jill Pettit, town clerk. There were four opinion letters sent out, and none were returned. That is all.
Mr. Ferguson, if I may state.
Basically, what I was trying to do was get this shed figured out. What happened is in March, my father passed away, and him and I owned the cabin together. And I didn't realize that he went through and had the shed ordered, so in the process of this, there was a shed at my house, I've got to put it somewhere, so I had to put it in the driveway. And then because it was a temporary set there, that I didn't know that it was a portable shed that I needed a permit, because it was, it's on skids and there's no foundation. So I wasn't aware that the laws appeared required, you know, a permit to get it, so then I came down right away and said, oh, here's what I got going on. I explained to Jay, and he's like, okay, you're gonna need this. And then we looked at it further and said, yep, you're gonna need a variance because of the waterway and the highway being right there. It's basically, I'm just gonna use the shed to keep the outdoor equipment, the long wall, the log splitter and whatnots. And that's basically where I stand on that.
You're the owner now?
Yes.
To this record, yes. All right, does anybody have any questions to the applicant? You're probably not aware that there's been two variances approved on this site already, once when the house was built, once when the garage was built?
No, sir, I'm not.
Go back to '92 and '97.
Question for Jay.
Yes.
And when I was out there and I talked to the applicant, I was trying to find the other lot line on the garage side of the property, but looking at, I didn't have the first variance along, but according to the drawing from Chrisman, 24 feet from his garage wall to his lot line, Bill's drawing, and the drain field for the septic is 12 feet by 40 feet. I don't know if you have that one on. That. We'd still need a road setback, we'd still need a road setback on that side of the lot, I guess is my question, if we looked at putting it at the end of the drain field, showing 116 feet to the garage. Drain field is 40 from the edge of the garage.
And how Bill would have known that, and that there's never been this survey on this property.
Oh, you got it, yeah. I don't know, maybe there were posts there at the time from the neighbor or something, but apparently they must have off the sanitary permit maybe, or...
Yeah, and he usually would indicate either a pipe, or he would also indicate an assumed lot line.
Yeah, I didn't see either.
Yeah, in conversations with the applicant, I did kind of, you know, address with him that I don't know where this property line is, there's something out by the highway, but asking with the surveyor that wouldn't be referencing to a property line. It says P Core on it, which would be more of a benchmark used for the highway to set elevations. I did kind of address with the applicant that you could spend a couple thousand dollars with the surveyor and have that surveyed off, and yeah, maybe there is an area tucked up in that corner, you know, past the drain field on the other side of the garage, but even in that case, you're still applying for reduced road setback.
That was my question, that, because the edge of that drain field would be 76 feet, and you'd have to be in front of that drain field on the roadside, so you'd still be too close, so, all right.
And if this board was so inclined to grant a variance here, I mean, that is something where you could just, you know, state that the size is to be as requested, and that the setback is potentially be as requested, and then, you know, leave it up to the applicant to see if he wants to pursue, you know, having additional survey work done to try and set that thing further to the west, on the other side of the driveway.
I'd show no interest in moving it that, you know what I mean, to where the garages off to the west side. For me, it would take too much of work to get done, and I'm already having issues with tree service and people coming out to get somebody to do that, I think it'd be like pulling teeth. Maybe just set it over there, like we talked about, this would be Plan B, the easiest way to go about it in the less harmful way.
Yeah.
In the pocketbook, that means.
My next question is if we approve this, can he remove that and put a permanent cement floor structure in, like a garage or something? Are we just approving the temporary structure?
It depends on what you put in as conditions. Generally, as I stated in the first case, you're approving footprints, so whether it's a shed or whether it's a garage, if it's the same required setbacks, the same footprints as shown, what difference does it make? If it's more of a permanent structure on a slab versus a shed, it's most likely not going anywhere for another couple decades. We can, if we consider, we could consider limiting height. Right, and I believe the...
14 feet max was part of the request, so.
Hold to that.
Really, if you put wheels under, you wouldn't have to do anything, would you?
Yeah, there's...
I thought about that, I asked you that, and there's different protocols that you gotta do, so, yeah. I'm too big on the shed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, or pull a semi-trailer in, which would really look nice.
Right, right, God forbid, yes.
What would you be opposed to creating some type of visual barrier, tree planting or bushes or something like that?
I would, I've actually talked about it, because it's right underneath the high lines, and there's trees.
It'd have to be something kind of low growth.
Yeah, and I thought about, maybe can I put lilac bushes in, but I didn't, that was the next step after I dealt with the shed. How do I put something in there that's gonna, you know, make the property look a lot nicer than just the shed sitting there?
Knock down the noise level, too.
Absolutely, I thought about it, and I talked to the one guy that does the high lines, they said I can plant anything I want, as long as it's underneath, that doesn't grow above the, and I have to maintain it before it gets to the high lines. So if I stepped outside of the high lines, is there a way that I can get trees planted between the high lines and the highway in that row area?
I think... How can I come by and lop one side of your trees off in the future?
That's how they'll do it, then they'll just kill the trees.
They'll go right back to their setback and lop the branches right off.
Even on the, if I made, because I've been cutting the lot line and trying to keep it nice and, you know, so it looks decent without all that honeysuckle stuff and whatever other bushes are in there, trying to keep it maintained.
Wow, you're, I think you're in a better direction with something like lilacs, a hedge-type plant that can grow.
Some that's gonna be a minimum at 55 feet from the center line, because the highways, when they go and they clear, they clear all the way out.
They cut it all down, yeah.
So you plant something at 50 feet, and you're opposite, that's a good job for done.
Yeah.
And don't plant something deer will eat.
No, don't, don't, don't. I did dogwoods one time, and that turned out to be a pre-asked, pretty, pretty pre-planned, but the deer also loved them.
Okay, any additional questions of the officer or of the applicant? Thank you.
I have one more.
I have to say this. Anybody else speak on behalf of the application? Hearing none? Anyone speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none? Okay, comments by the board or discussion by the board?
Another question for Jay. This property is unique, and you can tell by reading through the other variances, but I think the property can support this shed and the location, I mean, that's, those right-of-ways are pretty big, but if we do approve this, can we say this is, the last variance's property is maxed out? Because I can see this property sold into somebody else in 10 years and then come back and say, well, we have this shed here, we want to go 10 feet to the landward side of the highway and put a four-car garage in, you know, or a two-car garage in rather than a shed.
Well, if we're all still here, we'll tell them no.
Right. I really think you have to look at the individual circumstance of the application.
Yeah, case by case, I don't know.
If someone needed to expand this house to make it ADA compliant, you're gonna tell them, nope, can't do it now, because we said no more variances, and that's a sticky precedent to set. And if the applicant demonstrates that they meet the three-step test, I don't know whether you can just say no more variances are allowed?
No, that was why I was asking the question, because...
How do you pre-deny?
Right. They haven't seen what they requested.
Any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to either approve or deny the request as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Do we want to discuss having some kind of a buffer planted, like lilacs or something, or was that just a general commentary?
No, I think that we can have that discussion and make it part of the approval.
I think it would be beneficial to anybody else looking at this process.
And have the applicant present some type of landscaping design at the time the permit is issued.
Would that be subject to another approval after that, or would we?
No, it would be subject to review by the...
Do you want Laura to mention it in her motion that's still on the table?
Nothing's easy, is it?
Sorry. Somewhat of, you know, planting visual buffer to have that shed as unintrusively as possible.
Okay. Okay, I will make another motion unless we have more discussion.
I was gonna say, it's already got the height restriction in there for the future, so that you really can't do anything else with it, so I'm fine with that.
I make a motion to approve the application as presented with the additional requirement of a buffer zone to be put in place. Do we need to say it needs to be approved through the zoning office or just a buffer zone? I mean...
Buffer zone between the highway and the shed.
Buffer zone between the highway and the shed. Okay, got it.
I could run that buffer zone all the way from the driveway down, just I have to be setback from the highway, because I love that, I want to put pine trees, two rows of pines in there, but I didn't think that would ever get approved, you know, because they come through and they caught. But down the road from me, towards the east more, there's another gentleman that's got pines in between the high line and the highway, and he's gotta be right there, but they're such old trees that I think they went around them when they caught, you know, so they're permanently there. I was like, man, if I could put some blue spruce or something, you know, that would be on this side, but I don't know where I stand on that.
Yeah, you gotta stay outside of the right-of-way.
I'd be missing money inside the right-of-way if you can, because you're...
Otherwise, you're gonna...
Even if you do spruce, you know, it might be 20 years, but in 20 years, they're gonna lop off the top, because they're growing up high under the lines.
So something there for, like a lilac bush.
That's a lot of them. Grow 12, 15, 18 feet tall.
Ticking up.
Something like that, that I could pick up and have planted all the way through there. But there's no limitation, I can go through the driveway now, right?
I wonder if they're gonna plant some more trees, you know?
What the ultimate goal is to block the view of the shed?
The shed, yeah. Wouldn't be helpful for me, I mean, because you're there, and then you got some five feet versus the highway up there.
We have a die in the board, there's an out there digging the holes for you.
Yep, that's right, yeah.
All right. Is there a second to, Steve seconds motion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, I'd be saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion passes by zero. Fine is the fact, look.
Not damaging to the rights of others. Well, it's kind of hard, because it's a shed. Another permitted use is not possible on this property, and a minimal relaxation of the code is being granted. A minimal relaxation of the code is being granted. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other business come before the board?
I just have one item for discussion, and I can't find it now, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, on that subdivision ordinance, that you're kind of reworking or looking at changing or whatever, I know we have the legal opinion, but I think we have to look at updating our bylaws to, because the county ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, or the bylaws for the zoning committee and subdivision ordinance both say any appeals come to us, but I sent you a thing to send a council saying, we don't have the authority in our bylaws to hear that, that I think we should just add the authority, or request that we add that authority by voting for it and get it to the county board. I didn't bring it along, but we had that appeal that was pulled.
Yep.
But I was gonna argue that we have more authority to hear it, so I think the easiest thing to do would be to give ourselves the authority to go to the county board, give the subdivision.
And try to crack on something here this fall.
Yeah, I mean, I got it written up, I can send it, I haven't sent it to you before.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, if you're gonna do a bylaws amendment, I mean, you wanna look at the entire thing, see if there's anything else that needs or...
I want to fix this one, I don't...
Yeah.
Do that in the future. I think our bylaws are functioning well for this, but we talked about the other issue, people coming back for a two-inch change of it.
Yeah.
And none of us agreed to change that, so I think we went through it pretty good, I went through it pretty good myself, so I think, I think I'd like just to get that on the table, because I can still see that coming back as a problem, even though it's not right now, because you guys changed how you're interpreting it.
Yep, for that aspect, sure. You're talking about zoning administrator appeals in general.
Just dealing with the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
That we have no authority to hear anything on the subdivision ordinance in our bylaws. We're only granted the zoning issues, and subdivision is not a zoning issue. We can, when we have all the information, we can discuss it, I just wanted the board members to... Be aware that I wanted to work with Jay on that.
Okay, that's it. Anything else? Next meeting July 20?
Yeah, should be good on, I have a few things.
It's good to have everybody here. We're way more efficient in person than we are on television.
And then after July, you'll probably have the zoning committee appeal as well in August.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Jay.